All right, welcome everyone. As everyone's starting to join into the meeting, we'll give it a few minutes for everyone to populate here. I understand we're expecting over 100 participants, so just give us a few more minutes and we'll get the meeting started. Okay, looks like we have everybody on right now, so we will go ahead and get started. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Seneca Valley School District School Board Action Meeting of March 8th, 2020. And the roll call us in or to get us into our meeting, I'm going to ask for some help to gavel us in from a member of our audience, Sarah Choi, if you could come up now. So we always have a little helper, so I'm gonna, since we're virtual, make sure that, if you want to say hi to everyone. All right, if you want, if you would just gavel us in, just give me three good taps of the gavel, please. Thank you very much. With that tap of the gavel, I'd like to again welcome everyone to the Board Action Meeting of March 8th, 2021. At this time, I would ask that everyone join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much, and for our Pledge of Allegiance, I'll turn it over to Ms. Andressi.
Thank you, Mr. President. You have already met our Ila the Pledge student tonight, but I'm going to ask her to come up and join us at the microphone. Let's welcome Sarah Choi, a third grader at Evan City Elementary. Hi, Sarah. So Sarah is a third grader again at Evan City Elementary, although she is attending currently the cyber program through the Academy of Choice. Sarah's parents are joining us here tonight. They are Rudy and Jiwan Choi of Jackson Township. Welcome, Mom and Dad. She was nominated this evening by Evan City Elementary Principal Lori Pendred and Assistant Principal Andrew Teddy. And I'd like to welcome and thank Mr. Teddy for being here tonight in support of Sarah's. Thank you, Mr. Teddy. Sarah tells us her favorite subject here at school is art and that she would like to be a chef when she grows up. So I asked Sarah, could you tell everybody what your favorite meal is to make at home with your family?
I like to make egg rice with my mom.
Like to make egg rice with mom. And how do you make egg rice?
You need, first you need to fry an egg and then you mix it with rice. You add sesame oil and soy sauce.
Soy sauce. So she's been telling us a little bit about maybe opening a restaurant is an idea that she has in addition to being an executive chef. And I also understand you like to be a pastry chef possibly as well, like, now what kind of sweet treats do you like to make?
Cake and cookies.
Cake and cookies, don't we all, huh? So Sarah, thank you for being here tonight. I'm going to ask at this time for everyone here in the auditorium to please stand if you're able and at home to join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Sarah, when you're ready, go ahead and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was so good, Sarah. Great job. So earlier this evening, we gave Sarah, as you can see, her medal and her Seneca Valley Ila the Pledge t-shirt and a nice bag of Seneca swag that she can take with her. So thank you again, Sarah, and thank you, Mom and Dad, for being here this evening and Mr. Teddy. Appreciate it. Thank you. Great job.
Thank you very much. We'll continue on with our meeting and I'd ask that we have a roll call, please.
Ms. Bradel.
Here.
Mr. DeTulio.
Here.
Ms. Harrison.
Here.
Mr. Hester.
Here.
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Nickel.
Present.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Ms. Whittle.
Here.
Mr. Widowsen.
Here.
Thank you very much, and we're getting oh so close to having everyone together again. Can't wait till we can all be together instead of having someone attend remotely, but it was something that, you know, it's nice to be able to have the option so that we can still have everyone participate. So we'll move on to our information reports and I'll ask Ms. Andressi to continue, please.
Thank you again, Mr. President. We have two items of recognition this evening. The White House Commission on Presidential Scholars in the United States Department of Education recently announced that Seneca Valley Senior High School had five students selected as candidates for the United States Presidential Scholars Program. Seniors David Choi, Faith Condrick, Zachary Garcia, Kathleen Monahan, and Avani Salunki have now, now have the chance to be named a United States Presidential Scholar. Students are chosen for outstanding performance on their SAT assessment or the College Board SAT and/or nomination by the school. We congratulate all those students and we'll let you know how they do the next level. Our second item, Seneca Valley Choir seniors Ethan Bannon, Nicholas Folino, and juniors Alex Mortier and Jonah Schmelzer, in addition to Seneca Valley Band Senior Lizzie Silves, were accepted to participate in the National Association for Music Education All East Honors Ensemble, March 4th through the 6th. Mr. Bannon, Mr. Folino, Mr. Mortier, and Mr. Schmelzer represented the SV Coral Department as a part of the All East Mixed Chorus. Ms. Silves represented the SV Band Department as a wind player in All East Orchestra. Students participated in a virtual weekend experience that included keynote speakers, master classes with professional musicians, rehearsals with their conductors, as well as opportunities to learn and network with colleges and universities of various types and participate in mock auditions. What a wonderful experience for all of those students. We congratulate them for their honor. Under dates to remember this evening, Friday, March 12th, is our K-6 Report of Student Progress Release Date. Saturday, March 13th, there will be an SAT testing, testing here at the senior high school, 7:30 a.m. Sunday, March 14th marks daylight savings time. It will begin that morning. March 18th is end of the 7 through 12 SV AOC cyber third nine weeks. March 20th is the beginning of spring. March 23rd will be the end of the 7 through 12 third nine weeks for the traditional student. March 27th marks the beginning of Passover. March 31st will be the report card release date for grades 7 through 12. April 1st through the 2nd and 5th and 6th will be our spring break. There will be no school. And April 17th is an S, I'm sorry, an ACT testing date here at the senior high. Again, that one begins at 7:30 a.m. And that is all I have, Mr. President, unless you have questions.
Thank you very much. I do not, but Mr. Peterson, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I was, I've been watching the remarkable trends of our student athletes this year. And every now and then, as we listen to you, Ms. Andressi, talk about these remarkable achievements in the arts and academics. I wish there was a place that we could go, the public could go, our community could go to see sort of a running list, just like you can go to the sports pages and see the different leagues and where we stand and all that. Is there anywhere in the Seneca Valley system where somebody could go and scroll through and see all of these wonderful things that our students do outside of athletics?
Sure, absolutely. So if you go to the district website at svsd.net, our homepage has a headline section, so a lot of, not a lot, all of the items you see here, you will find there as well. We also have social media sites where we run this information. A lot of times additional information and even photos of students will appear there. So we encourage people to follow us on our social media pages, which are also linked from our homepage. So you can find us there. And then monthly, at the end of every month, we publish an e-newsletter called Raider Pride. And again, it's a collection of all of these items that we're sharing with you tonight in addition to athletics.
I guess I appreciate, and I think I knew about half of that. I just think it would be really kind of neat to be able to go in June or in January and just to find a site and be able to scroll through it and see all of the incredible achievements our students have accrued. All right, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Andressi. Moving on, your plan in our backup was financial reports for operations, senior high activities, intermediate high activities, athletics, tax collection reports, and capital projects funds. I'm sure if you had any questions, you directed them to Ms. Berner. So there's no questions about any of those. We'll move on to the COVID-19 update. Dr. Vitell, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Pennsylvania Department of Health COVID Early Warning Dashboard that we follow closely has been updated. And we will be, as a county, Butler County, in the moderate range again. The following data is indicated as well on the early warning dashboard. The PCR positivity rate, the most recent seven days, the data for that is February 26th through March 4th is at 5.2%. That is up slightly from 4.8% the week prior. Incident rate, again, most recent seven day period here, February 26th through March 4th, per 100,000 residents, we are at 70.8. That is up from the previous week of 60.7. The difference in confirmed cases, we are up 19 cases. And that is the most recent seven days for the county versus the previous seven days. The previous seven days, we were down by eight, so that is up slightly as well. The Butler County daily COVID rate, and that is where we are tracking on our own spreadsheet, the 14-day rolling average, since the state is using a seven-day period comparing it to the prior seven-day period. This is just a view that we do so that we can get a handle on the 14-day rolling average. That's at 32.8. That number has flattened and it has remained in the low 30s for about a month. Now, again, that's a great thing, but we know that this is not over yet. And where we have flattened is much higher than certainly where we were in the fall. So the next item we take a look at is the ZIP code COVID cases. That was very interesting. This whole weekend, we only had three new cases reported across seven ZIP codes. So that was very good to see. And then finally, our own COVID dashboard, since we came out of cohort back to four days a week, we are seeing a slight uptick in cases as well. Currently, K to 12 with the in-person and cyber, we are looking at 22 active student cases. And our quarantine numbers are up. We have 128 students in quarantine across the district. And that is across approximately 7,000 students. Active staff cases, we have three currently for which we are aware, but we also have nine staff across the district that are in quarantine. Again, those numbers are higher than we would like to see them. But we did know when we moved out of cohort back to four days a week, it is tough to social distance. There's no, very little evidence that that transmission is occurring at school, although we are investigating two cases, two recent cases, and I'll talk about one. The cases by schools, now since the county is no longer in substantial, keep in mind that the recommendations to close are now recommendations. They are not requirements. But when we are in substantial as a county, those thresholds to close cases per building that go towards a closure, which are counted differently than active cases, depending on where they fall in that 14-day period. When we are off on Fridays, when we're in substantial, we can reset that because we've had a preemptive closure where we clean and we contact trace. And this dashboard is updated daily at different times. Whenever our nurse administrator, Nurse Williams, can get to it, she does. She collects data from all of our school nurses. And we certainly want to thank her. This is a lot of work. Initially, at the beginning of the year, I was keeping it, Dr. McCarty, Dr. McKinley were helping me. And then we handed this off to Nurse Williams, and she's just done a great job with our school nurses in keeping track of these cases. But we are seeing these numbers come up again. And, you know, we've been warned over and over, when you let up on mitigations like six feet, you see the numbers come back up. So they are manageable at this point, but still, you know, concerning. We don't want any COVID cases, which would be the, the goal, but that is certainly tough to achieve right now. And we also know the science has told us, if the community numbers are up, you'll see them in your school. If the community numbers are down, you won't see as many in your school. So we know a majority and the evidence and the science has shown us this is community transmission we're seeing. However, I do want to take the opportunity to remind parents and guardians, please, please do not send children sick to school. Sometimes you may not know, and we understand that children could be asymptomatic and not exhibiting any symptoms, and we're certainly not faulting parents for those children that may come asymptomatic and then find out they have COVID. But if someone in your home is awaiting a COVID test, please, please do not send your children to school until you get the results of those tests. Because we had a recent case where this happened. And it really puts our adults and all the people in the school building in a difficult position of exposure, even with masks. Because in our elementary buildings, we cannot achieve six feet of distance with our teacher to our students, as we know, many special ed classrooms. And our, our best teachers, our teachers in elementary, if they're doing their job well, they have a hard time staying away from elementary kids for, for, you know, less than 15 minutes. It's just unreasonable. So please keep in mind, if you're awaiting a test in your home, I am kindly asking that you keep children at home. That's why we have the live streaming available. And we don't want to put the adults at risk any more than they may already be. An update on vaccinations, I am just so pleased to tell you that we worked through the weekend. We have been allotted so many of the Johnson and Johnson vaccines from the state. And I'm just so pleased to tell you that because of a lot of effort this weekend with both our teachers and other school districts, as we sit here tonight, any district employee or contractor of the district, that would include our bus companies, that would include our cleaning contractors. They would, anyone who wants the J&amp;J vaccine will be scheduled to get it. And they should be getting emails this evening from the state about that. But I'd want to publicly thank the following groups of people first. In our IU, there are 26, 27 school districts. It is a big IU, Midwestern Intermediate Four. It's out of Grove City. That's how the state is pushing the J&amp;J vaccine out as far as the logistics of how this will happen. And so on Saturday at noon, I received a list of all of our employees that were signing up for the J&amp;J vaccine. Between Saturday at noon and last night at 11:00 and even into early this morning, we were able to get over 500 people scheduled in the state's system. Now, they don't know their dates and their times yet, but I'll be sharing those in a moment. And we were able to do that because we had exceeded our allocation. Seneca Valley was allotted 345. That's not even close to covering our teachers, let alone, you know, we would need close to 630-ish, 640 for our teachers, plus the super subs, we're pushing 650, 660 if everyone wanted it. We also have, including our contractors, we have close to 1,000 people we would need to cover. And so these school districts gave me their slots that they did not need over the weekend. Greenville School District, Sharon, West Middlesex, Sharpsville, Commodore Perry, Shenango, and Hermitage. And I'm just so grateful that they not only had them, but they reached out over the weekend, contacted me and that we worked collaboratively to not only get Seneca Valley covered, but every school district in the intermediate unit, Midwestern IU Four, is now covered according to our executive director as of this afternoon. So that is just very promising. We feel so lucky that the teachers and all of the educators were moved up in the 1B priority, and we are grateful. However, we want to be mindful that this is not over. So many of our teachers have worked so hard to be careful and to be safe. And we're trying to get them to the vaccine. And, you know, if, if things happen where, you know, children are coming to school and someone's waiting on a test at home, and then the teacher gets COVID as a result of that, you know, all that hard work and all of that persistence and patience and waiting for the vaccine, now they won't be able to get it. So we need the community's help. We need parents. I know you feel like we need a break. I know the weather has gotten nicer and we're moving out. And I know many children have had COVID and they've had minor cases. And so parents say to me, our whole family had it and it was minor. It's not a big deal. That is great. I am so glad for you and your family, but not everyone is faring so well. And that would include the adults that work in this district. So I am asking you kindly and patiently and professionally to work with us to get through these next two weeks. We also had secondary teachers, grades, actually, the state classified our secondary teachers, grades 6 through 12. And they told us they would not have enough vaccine to cover all of our secondary teachers. They would not have enough vaccine to cover our support staff in our secondary grades 6 through 12. So those teachers and employees, as soon as CBS opened to teachers, they went and got the vaccine, many of them this weekend. And so because of their persistence in getting the vaccine in other ways, that was another way we were able to cover every employee. I mean, we have, we have teachers driving all over the state to get this vaccine. I'll be honest with you. And again, I think it shows you their level of persistence and the hard work that they're trying to teach and find vaccine and get to the vaccine sites. So the next two weeks will be very hectic because while we already have 150 employees vaccinated as I sit here today or with appointments, close to vaccination, now we will be throwing an additional 500 employees, starting this Friday, into vaccinations. We will be vaccinating at a central site. And vaccinations will occur from 2:00 to 9:00 p.m. in the evening on weeknights and then 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on the weekends. And so we are hoping we can get all of our teachers scheduled from next Friday, six days out. So in the next two weeks, we do have to prepare for the possibility of staffing shortages. Although teachers will have a choice and hopefully they will have openings to be able to go in the evenings and they'll do their best and on the weekends, that may not always be possible. And then in addition, we don't have a lot of qualitative data on the J&amp;J vaccine and the side effects from it. We had the clinical trials, but remember, it was just emergency authorized as of, what, two Saturdays ago? So it might have even been last Saturday. This has all happened very quickly for educators across the state of Pennsylvania. So we don't know how they're going to feel after getting the vaccine. So we do have to prepare for staff shortages. We hope that won't happen, but we were close in at least one elementary this morning where several teachers had already gotten the vaccine and did not feel well and could not physically come to work. So they're doing their very best. I'm asking for patience from our community. I'm asking for empathy and understanding. See if I have anything else for you. I've covered all the data and I've covered the vaccine. Any questions by the board in regards to a COVID-19 update?
Any questions from anyone? Can see, I would like to take this time just to thank, not only Dr. Vitell, but, you know, a lot of the members of staff, Dr. McCarty, Dr. Roberts, Ms. Bobek, who did work over the weekend, you know, putting in marathon Zoom meetings to make sure that every teacher was available to get this vaccine. Talking to 27 different superintendents at the different IUs, the teamwork that went in to make sure that, you know, everyone's verified that they can get coverage and making sure that, you know, all those other districts that had extra doses were willing to give those to Seneca. It was great collaboration, but folks, that's a lot of work. 27 districts, 27 different superintendents and their helpers, whoever was assisting them doing it. You know, yeoman's work, you know, that the staff did to make sure that we could do this. It's unbelievable to me that you guys knew the dedication was there, but to actually be able to do it time and time again, you know, over the last year with everything that's gone on with, with COVID, you know, your job has been seven days a week for the entire administrative staff. So I appreciate it. Everyone this board does and the community at large does as well. I, I can't think of a better group to get this done than the folks that you have and the team that you've built to make sure that you're doing it for the right reasons and getting the kids back to school. So, you know, kudos again, and thank you very much for your dedication, Dr. Vitell.
Thank you. It's very much a team effort, and that's not just central office. That is, as I said, teachers who were willing to go out and find availability of vaccine so they could give their spot up to other employees here. That's just huge. And that they're willing to drive. I mean, I even had a teacher email me and said, I went to Boardman, Ohio, so I could give my slot to someone else. So these are people who are trying to livestream, put lessons together to livestream, who are also doing in-person instruction with students in front of them, who are traveling across the state and sometimes across the state border to get vaccine so that we can all be safe. So thank you.
If there's no other questions on the COVID update, we'll move on in our meeting then. The next item is the public comment, but there is no one here for public comments. We'll just move on. And we'll move on to the next, which I'll be looking for a motion that we approve the following. To approve our minutes of our work session of February 1st, 2021, our regular meeting of February 8th, 2021, and our special meeting of February 17th, 2021. And that's all in your backup. Our Treasurers Report, that's including the backup, the general fund bills, which are in the amount of $3,639,649.71. That's also in your backup. And our construction funds bill, construction fund bills in the total amount of $1,867,308.81. And that also is in your backup. Can I have a motion, please? Thank you, Mr. Nickel. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Any discussion on any of these issues? Hearing and seeing none. If you call the roll, Lisa, please.
Ms. Whittle.
Yes.
Mr. Nickel.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Bradel.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Hester.
Yes.
Mr. Widowsen.
Yes.
Mr. DeTulio.
Yes.
Motion carries with nine and the affirmative.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to Administration Action. Mr. Nickel, please.
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion with regards to the following Administration Action items. First, a group of board policies. They are detailed in your backup. There are Policy 209, Student Health Examinations, Revised Second and Final Reading. Policy 247, hazing revised second and final reading. Policy 249, anti-bullying revised second and final reading. Policy 426, complaint process revised second and final reading. Policy 824, maintaining professional adult student boundaries revised second and final reading. And Policy 917.1, weapons new first reading. And Policy 252, dating violence new first reading. And the second item is for our revised phased school reopening health and safety plan. To approve the revised phased reopening health and safety plan, the revisions on that plan are detailed for you in your backup.
Thank you for the motion, Mr. Nickel. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Bradel. Is there any discussion? Not hearing or seeing any. Lisa, if you call the roll, please.
Ms. Harrison. Yes. Ms. Bradel.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Nickel.
Yes.
Mr. Hester.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Whittle.
Yes.
Mr. Widowsen.
Yes.
And Mr. DeTulio.
Yes.
Motion carries with nine and the affirmative.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to Instruction Action, and we'll go to Ms. Harrison, please.
Thank you. Tonight, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following four Instruction Action items. First is the MIU for Intergovernmental Agreement. Approved Midwestern Intermediate Unit Four Intergovernment Renewal Agreement for the 2021-22 school year is provided in detail in the backup. Second item is grant dispersment. Grant permission to apply for and disperse if approved. The Highmark Foundation School Grant in the amount of $7,500 for health and wellness initiatives that promote a positive school climate. Specifically, funds will be used to create wellness rooms in the senior high school in Ryan lawyer Middle School for students to have a suitable space to decompress from stress, learn and practice coping strategies, and utilize tools to improve mental and physical health requested by Ms. Annie Mersing, Director of Advancement, and detailed in the backup. The third item is Point Park University Concurrent Enrollment Agreement. Approved the Concurrent Enrollment Agreement with Point Park University is detailed in the backup. And the fourth item is 2021 to 22 school student-teacher calendar. Approved the 2021-22 student and teacher calendar is detailed in the backup.
Thank you for the motion, Ms. Harrison. Is there a second? That was Mr. Widowsen? Thank you, sir. Is there any discussion or questions on any of these items? I'm not seeing any. I'm not seeing anyone. So Lisa, if you call the role, please.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Mr. Whittleson?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Whittle?
Yes.
Ms. Bradel?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. DeTulio?
Yes.
Motion carries with nine and the affirmative.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next item, which is instruction action E. Ms. Harrison, would you like to take this one as well, please?
Sure. Um, this deals with the five-day in-person instruction. Students in grades K through twelve will have the option to return to in-person instruction five days per week, beginning the week of March twenty second, with the first Friday in-person being March twenty sixth, twenty twenty one. Live streaming will continue for those students who may need it. During this week, the week of March eighth through the week of March fifteenth, teachers will be receiving vaccinations through the intermediate unit in Grove City and throughout other other locations in the area. Because of this, we suspect potential staffing shortages during that time. If Seneca Valley experiences staff shortages due to vaccinations or new COVID cases, the district administration is authorized to move to a remote asynchronous instruction day in any building that may be impacted. Parents will be notified. However, it may be on short notice.
Thank you very much. Can we have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Nick. Was there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Any discussion on this issue? Hearing and seeing none. Dr. Vitale, is there anything you'd like to add on this?
No, I I would just say that we all want the same thing. You know, we want the opportunity for five days in person. But we need to make sure we're being very deliberate about this next step. I know that, you know, as we speak to secondary kids, most of them tell us they're kind of okay with that Friday. But we're trying to get kids back, elementary especially. We were hoping to be able to do that this week, but with the vaccines rolling out as quickly as they did over the next two weeks with new COVID cases, it's just not something at this point we think is feasible for this week. But this is the goal. We are working towards it. We are getting closer. We need to continue to be vigilant. And again, if you've had COVID and it was minor for you, that's great. I'm happy for you. We still need this time on Fridays to clean, to prepare if we have staffing shortages, which in spite of being here four days a week, we might still need to close a select building if we don't have enough staff. We're going to do our very best. We have super subs that have just been great. They too will, they were offered the vaccination. So everyone that we have on deck, we've, we've done everything we can to prepare, but we have no way of knowing how many school employees could even be in the cafeteria, not just the classroom. We have no way of knowing how many school employees will be impacted with side effects or symptoms as a result of getting the vaccine. So we have to look at this as we're getting closer, but we're just not there yet. And let's keep strong on our mitigations in our schools. You know, today outside was the first day for spring sports, absolutely beautiful. Kids were enjoying themselves on the field. We don't want to disrupt anything that we've worked so hard to get. So, you know, as I said in an all-staff email today, let's cross the finish line together safely.
Thank you very much, Dr. Vitale. Lisa, if you'd call the role, please.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Bradel?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Whittle?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Whittleson?
Yes.
Mr. DeTulio?
Yes.
Motion carries with nine and the affirmative.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to business and finance action. Mr. Jacobs, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will make a motion for the approval of five business finance actions this evening. First is budget transfers, to approve the budget transfers included in the backup. The second is MIU for general operating budget, approve the twenty twenty one, twenty two Midwestern intermediate unit for general operating budget in the in the total amount of three million, four hundred and forty three thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars with Seneca's, Seneca Valley's contribution being one hundred and forty five, one hundred and forty five thousand, nine hundred and seventy three dollars. The third item is the Butler County Area Vocational Technical School twenty twenty one, twenty two budget. Approve the Butler County Area Vocational Technical School Budget for the twenty twenty one, twenty two school year in the amount of six million, seventy five thousand, two hundred and eighty nine dollars as included in backup. Fourth item is change orders, approve the construction change orders for the new K through six elementary school at Erman Road is included in the backup. The final item is related to the audit for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. Acknowledge the local audit report for the twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty twenty school year as included in the backup.
Thank you for the motion, Mr. Jacobs. Is there a second, please? Thank you, Ms. Bradel. Any discussions on any of these issues? I I would just like to make a comment on the audit. Again, it's a, it's another good, clean audit. You know, Seneca Valley being a large district, we have done extremely well with our audits. We we are, we have great processes in place. We have an awesome business manager with Ms. Bertner. So I'm not surprised by by the audit being clean, but just wanted to point that out. It's one of those things that, you know, in this world of COVID, these things have been overlooked. So, you know, great job by the business department yet again. Hearing and seeing no other requests for comments or questions. Lisa, if you call the role, please.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Whittle?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Whittleson?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Bradel?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. DeTulio?
Yes.
Motion carries with nine and the affirmative.
Thank you very much. We'll move on in our agenda to personnel action, and Mr. Whittleson, please.
Thank you, Mr. DeTulio. Tonight, under personnel action, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resignations, the appointments, leaves, and retirements, having discussed this in the executive session and provided in our backup.
Thank you for the motion, Mr. Whittleson. Is there a second? I'll go with Mr. Peterson. Thank you. Since we have discussed these items in executive, we'll go straight to a roll call, please.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Ms. Bradel?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Whittleson?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Whittle?
Yes.
Mr. DeTulio?
Yes.
Motion carries with nine and the affirmative.
Thank you very much. We'll move on, and we are in receipt of, believe it or not, only two pieces of communication. That's been a while that it's been that small of a list, but we still appreciate it all. So we'll move on, and is there anything else to be brought to the board for the good of the order? Real quick, if I may, we had the the Peasars meeting on Thursday and Friday of this week. So just a real quick recap. The good news is the fund balance increased from sixty point five billion to sixty four point two billion in the last year. So it was great to see that fund heading in the right direction. The unfunded liability is decreasing, not as much and as quickly as some of those would hope, but it is decreasing, which is a good sign. So Peters is looking good right now. So that's a, that's a positive thing. The only other issue that came out of the meeting was on the withdrawal liability I mentioned before. And this was, you know, the, if a school district had decided to outsource a certain portion of the work, they would be liable for the unpaid Peasars contributions for the future, for the retirement. That has been sent back to the legislature to get some clarification on the law because it's very unclear how to apply it to different things. And they basically, they being the legislature, were saying to Peasars, you can apply it however you want, but it puts a lot of gray into what should be a black and white law. So we've asked for them to clarify that, and until that happens, nothing will be happening with withdrawal. So it'll be probably, you know, the legislators on the board said that they'll fast-track it, but it still will probably be three to six months before we see anything on that. We'll keep you informed with anything that happens there. So anyway, if there's no other items to be brought before the board, I would look for a motion to adjourn our meeting. Thank you, Mr. Nick. Was there a second? I'll give that to Ms. Who was that? Is that you, Ms. Whittle? Okay. Ms. Whittle, we'll give you the second then. All those in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or nay. We are adjourned. Good night, folks. Thank you very much.